Okay, thank you. Welcome to the June 2nd, 2014 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Let's start with a pledge allegiance. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Uh, let's see. The board has just coming out of a paperwork review, manifest and et cetera. Mr. Lemire will be excused tonight. We do expect Steve Perry at some point. He should be here shortly, I hope. But we'll, uh, we'll file through. First up is our review of items for consent. Uh, in the consent folder is the minutes for May 12th. The accounts payable manifest for $149,146.44. The payroll manifest of $53,729.63. The declaration of March 1st as Pat Jewett's Volunteer Appreciation Day. Elderly exception recertification times two, an abatement for MAP 1 Lot 70, and an abatement exemption requalification. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve all items listed under consent.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries three, zero, zero. Uh, next up is a request for items for other business. Do we have any other business for the board tonight that's not on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, discuss legal counsel, um, opinions. And, um, yeah, legal counsel opinion, that'll be it.
Okay. We'll add that to the other business. Anything else?
Um, I can speak up since, um, Selectman Perry had asked earlier about, um, having a conversation about the, uh, path we want to take for Road Agent with the article that passed, so.
Let's add that.
You're right. I'll put that in. I'm, uh...
Yep. Alright, so those two items added. I know Steve asked some other questions, but they were all answered already, right?
Right, yeah. Well, we're gonna double back on a couple of those, so.
Okay.
He asked to bring that one forward, so.
Alright. Alright, so those things will be added to the other business towards the end of the meeting. Okay. Alright. That being said, first up is our scheduled appointment, Merrimack Valley Regional Water District update. Mr. Peoples?
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
One time to sit in here.
How's your summer so far?
Uh, we're still waiting for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Today was a, today and yesterday was a brief view of what it could look like.
Well, um, we don't have a lot to report. I, I can tell you that the, um, last year has been one full of some unique circumstances. Um, as you know, Pennechuck has taken over, uh, was taken over by the city of Nashua. And of course, as many of us know, Mr. Byron and I took this job over for him probably 10 years ago, monitoring, uh, the water district as part of, um, my role as a selectman, and I've continued on doing that right right through the charter process and ultimately to this purchase. Uh, part of the PUC agreement mandated that the water district had a member on the Pennechuck Board. I, I can tell you there's been a lot of dancing around that with, uh, both the Nashua, Nashua's council and the water district's council. But we finally come to the, they, they came to the realization that that was part of the PUC agreement that needed to take place. So we advertised the job and we have offered it to a candidate and he's accepted it. I'm not sure that it's available for public discretion at this point. Um, it should be available in the next day or two for the board. Um, candidate is from Amherst, he's very qualified and, uh, I think it'd be a good representative speaking for the communities that are involved in the water district to help balance out what's going on with Nashua. Other than that, there's not a lot to report. You should have received a check for a portion of the money that the Tonilich Field invested in the water district.
Yep.
Uh, $16,750.
Eight dollars, right. And we have a public hearing we gotta schedule.
We'll, we'll schedule that a couple of weeks out, actually. Accept it.
Originally, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that that amount was supposed to be for the full expenses that were put in.
We, we did. I can tell you a lot about that. There, the money that exchanged hands, if you remember, the, the crafting of the water district was supposed to be the receiver for the water works. And ultimately, it didn't happen that way. The, the, the water district became a player, but not the owner. So, at this point, we have no revenue stream. So, um, the money that we got was part of the PUC, the PUC agreement with the city of Nashua. And it was a, a portion of money with no way of, of refilling it at this point, wouldn't see a, a revenue stream. So we paid legal expenses that we needed to pay. We, and we kept some money in reserve and we, uh, made a motion to return some of the money to the towns. Um, it was equally distributed across all the towns as a percentage of what they contributed. I wouldn't say that's over. I, I would say that, you know, as the water district moves forward and we're, we become more engaged with the board at Pennechuck and what our role in that is, there is a potential for other revenue streams up, up, up the road and that we could expect to see more money.
Now, Nashua was part of that, uh, water district originally when it was formed.
They still are.
And my question is, did Nashua assume, assume or subsume that obligation when they purchased the Pennechuck system?
Yeah.
And, and did the water district, um, at least have some level of contract with Pennechuck?
Well, actually, our level of contract with the Pennechuck Board is that the water district is entitled to, not entitled, it's mandatory in the PUC agreement that they have a member. What had happened was Nashua thought they had a different role in this, in appointing the person to the board. And they had went round and round and round that the candidate that we presented needed to be vetted by the Board of Aldermen and the mayor and her staff and ultimately, it turns out that that's not so, that they need to accept our person that we send to them. The, the Board of Aldermen still has to, I guess ratify that a token way, but it's mandated by the PUC and it's not up to them. And they thought it was up to them. So, in all that, and as, like I said, the last year has been filled with a lot of dances, dancing around that particular topic. Uh, when it comes to money, Nashua didn't get any money back. They, um, ultimately footed most of the expenses. What, the, the $250,000 that the district received came from Nashua as part of the Pennechuck agreement. And that's what we repaid the towns with and the, the current legal bills that the district had incurred.
So, it's your opinion that no more money will be coming back, then?
Uh, no, that is not my opinion. My opinion is no more money will be coming back right now, but I, I can't say that in the future that won't be reimbursed. I can't, I can't see it at this point, but I mean, we're in a, in a place where this is all evolving, so. I'll be able to tell you more after we have our, our person sitting on the Pennechuck Board.
Any other question, Jason?
Uh, I'm just curious a little bit more about what is ongoing? What's, what's the role of the district other than a body that places somebody on the board?
Well...
What else are you doing?
Well, yeah, that's, that, that's a real easy question. We have a charter and everything that the district is supposed to be doing is in that charter. When you look at it, what we have right now is we have everybody that's sitting on the Board of Directors for the Pennechuck Corporation were placed there by the city of Nashua. That being said, that there's no voice for any of the other communities in that quarter. So, the, the ongoing role of the district, I think, as we spelled it on the charter was, uh, ultimately, we received the Pennechuck Water Works was to come up with a, a good infrastructure plan. And more importantly, and one of the things that was always a high priority in the charter was a good resource plan. What's the resource? Where is it? How is it getting consumed? I could, I could tell you that at the rate that, um, we are dishing out permits for water, or were, that no one really knew, uh, when it was, what, what a sustainable level was. And part of the, the charter of the water district was to come up with that, a resource plan that, that looked to manage that holistically across the 16 communities. So, I, I see the ongoing, the ongoing role of the district is to, to make those decisions and to instruct, to instruct and guide our person that we sent to the board as well as them to report back, what the ongoing things in Nashua are. So we can make sure that it's good, that it's gotta be good for all the communities.
So, did the, did the water district actually make the resource plan and all that today, or is that still something?
No, that was all part of the charter that, um, that these were all goals and things that we needed to, to get to. And we needed, we need to have somebody on the, um, the Pennechuck Board that has those same, those same core values.
Right. My question would be, prior to Pennechuck being purchased?
No.
Did the water just, so that, okay.
No. That, that's an extensive, that would be extensive body of work, but it's one that Pennechuck Corporation needs, needs to, needs to do. I, I don't know if I answered that clearly or not. It's, the, the ongoing role of the district is, is founded in the charter and, and I s- I still don't know that at some point in the world that the water district won't ultimately be the, the purveyor of water. Yeah, a lot of that was, a lot of the way that deal got structured and the way it all happened, played out in the end, was all about bonding and, and items like that, that weren't really, they weren't necessarily good for each individual community that's involved in the Pennechuck Corporation for buying water, but they were a necessity to keep it as a local resource. So, you know, was that the ultimate, the, the best plan? Nope, this was B. But it kept the resource local and not owned by, you know, some company from another country. So, you know, it was a great, it was a great goal and we got there and ongoing, I see the, um, the water district trying to, to help set policy that makes, makes it fair for all the communities.
How often is a district meeting?
Uh, the district has been meeting about once a quarter and, um, only because we really haven't any business other than getting our representative on the board. And now that we've got, we advertised for that position, as I said, we appointed somebody. The, the next, the next thing for them to go through is the, the dance with the city. We have to finish that. Once the Board of Aldermen ratify that and that person is sitting on the Pennechuck Board, I see the district meeting more often to start setting those, setting the courses for guidance.
You know if that individual will be coming around to the various towns?
I don't. I, I don't think that job was assigned to them, um, as of yet. It could, it could possibly happen, but their, their, their role is to go sit on the Pennechuck Board.
Any other questions, Jason?
Nope, thanks.
Alright, Ray, thank you very much.
Like I said, it's, it's, it's ongoing. Um, I was happy to be able to get that check. It was sitting over at Bedford Town Hall. I had to go sign it.
No, appreciate it. Thank you for all the work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And, you know, keep us posted if things change.
I, I will. Like I said, right now, there, there's not a lot. It's been, it's really been an evolution. And I, I see it the next three or four years being just that, a continuing evolution as we move forward with water.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night. Alright, moving on to the, the rest of the agenda. Administrator report, new business. 2010 police vehicle status is the first item.
Alright.
Can I assume that the?
You can, you can assume that the chief and lieutenant are here for that purpose, so I'll be the AV guy.
Pretty much, that's what I thought it was.
You're here to tell us how great everything's going?
Certainly.
Good.
You got a lot on that.
How do I advance it?
Up and down there, I'll probably.
Use, use the errors.
Okay, Chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, basically what I did is I put together some information, um, on our current fleet, where we're at, where we're at for repairs, uh, my, sorry, mileage and, and other things that we're seeing, um, over this, over the past 15 months or so with our cars.
I don't, does the board know what's prompted this? I'm curious.
I know.
Okay. I know, I know, basically, we've had, we've had some major failures. We've had two cruisers down for periods of time and this is what's discussed where we're at, how we're gonna deal with it. Okay.
Yeah. Basically, um, over the past 15 months, we've had, um, um, we're going between three, we've had four cars as our front line is in general. It's knocked down to three and then as of two weeks ago, we were down to just two cars. Um, we've put in, uh, in the past 15 months, 20, between $22,000 and $23,000 in repairs on cars five and six. So, we're seeing a lot of failures. Um, not only that, but when they're down, then we're taxing our new cars that we got last year to the point where, um, you'll be in the lease and we'll be done with the car. So the, the way it's looking is like car threes.
Well, you went to the threads. I didn't mean to try, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood why.
So, uh, right now, uh, this is, this is where we're at. We have car three, four, five and six. Uh, as of the writing of this, five and six were broken down. Uh, we just put in about $1,200 to get car five, uh, running. Uh, and we just put in another, a little over a thousand, almost $1,100 today on car six. Uh, that has not been out on a shift yet, so, uh, we're not sure of the status of that.
But it's been returned to the fleet. It's not.
It has. It has.
Just to, before we leave the slide, just the, the top points that the chief has there, I think are important, too. Um, the, when five and six are out of rotation, it means the two newer vehicles get more intensive use and more intensive miles. So you'll see that the, both three and four right now are tracking higher than where we would expect them to be in a normal full rotation.
Yeah, actually, uh, car three we've had for one year. So, with another year, we're gonna have a minimum of 70, uh, potentially 80,000 miles on that car. And that's about where we get rid of them. Uh, the other car we got around September, October, and that's got 22,000. That actually has a little bit more mileage than car three is on a, on a monthly basis. Uh, car five, over 100,000. Car six, 81,000. It's a cost from January to current. Um, actually, car five, you're gonna have to add, uh, another, uh, $1,200 onto that. It is now running. Uh, car six, we spent, uh, $7,300 in. And, uh, we just put another $1,000 into that, uh, as of today.
Chief, how much of that money that you're listing there, the 11-5 and the 7,300, is a result of maintenance and not necessarily breakdown?
There was, we took that out. We took the oil changes out, um, tire changes, inspections and stuff like that. All that's taken out of it.
So that's pure?
That's pure vehicle breaking down.
Breakdown, okay, thank you.
And I actually have some of that.
Brake fix and, and safety issues, right? Anything that was identified as a safety problem?
Correct. And I took some of that right there. Uh, we spent, uh, in 2013, over $10,000 on car five to include fuel pump, AC unit, front stabilizers and such. Uh, in car six, over $6,000, uh, the heater, the AC, element, assembly, brakes, rotor, things like that that had failed. That were, you know, somewhere around 15 to 1800 dollars in repairs when they repaired them. When we have these cars down, then what happens is the other cars are now running, uh, 24 hours a day. As of last week, we had, um, instead of two man patrols, we had two officers in one car. Cause that's just, we just didn't have any cruisers left. Uh, car three, like I said, has 35,000. By the end of its patrol life, uh, it's gonna have 85,000. That's gonna be in, uh, next year and not the three years like the leases. And car four has 22,000. We expect it to have 80 by next year. So there'll be, uh, the way that, the cars are running now, that's, that's what it's looking like.
Those mileage figures that you have, chief, are they odometer mileage figures or are you also using runtime?
We're not using the, we haven't used the runtime. Uh, we're strictly running off of the, uh, the mileage that's on the cruisers.
What do you, what do you typically put for mileage on a year, on a cruiser?
Um...
Our plan is 30, uh, because what, the, the rotation of three years at 90 is an average of 30, 30, 30 for three years and then move on to another use. So...
What happened is, uh, most of the board members who are still, who are here when we had the 2010, I'd say, cruiser crisis, where we got rid of, um, four cars and we leased four cars. Um, my understanding of that was at the end of that, we would go and replace all four cars. That didn't happen. What we did is we purchased two cruisers. Uh, but it had a ripple effect for all of the cars, from the detail cars, the admin cars, to the frontline cars. So the detail cars that we have out there are extremely poor. Uh, it's, it's gonna tax us when we, next year, when we, uh, move two other cars down to those cars, I don't know if they're, how great they're gonna be as far as being a detail car. And then as our, uh, admin cars get to the place where we need to replace them, we would normally take our frontline cars, move them down to an admin car so that we're not purchasing frontline, admin and detail cars. So what's happening is it's causing us to not have that buffer to have an admin, you know, admin cars in between. The big thing is, it's, nothing's under warranty anymore. With the frontline cruisers now, if an engine goes, it's not a problem. They replace it for free. If an engine goes in car five or car six, we're, we're paying full freight on it. And, and that's what we're seeing and, uh, we paid roughly $20,000. It's actually 22,000, almost 23,000 as of today, uh, since January 1st, 2013. And the way we're going, it looks, you know, there's potential for another 20,000 before we're done with the end of the year. You know, if, if it proves, you know, the way it's been going. Car seven and car eight should have been gone two years ago. Uh, we're not putting any money into those. They are strictly driving to a detail and running there. If they break down, we're just gonna tow it back here. We're not gonna do, um, we're not gonna put any more money into them. They're just, car eight is, uh, extremely poor. Um, car seven has over 100,000. Car eight has 102,000. Uh, they're absolutely not patrol worthy. I remember when, I, I remember when you went out and rode me. It's basically in that condition, uh, the cars that we have of the details. Some of the recommendations is you'd replace car five and six with, uh, the frontline explorers. Uh, there's currently, I contacted MHQ. They currently do have two cars available that, uh, meet the requirements that, that we have. They're also in the color black. They don't have to repaint them. Uh, they have a hold on it till tomorrow, uh, if the board chooses to, to look at that direction. Uh, replace car seven and eight is, is a possibility. I don't think we're gonna look at that, at this, this is something in the future that...
This is kinda planting the seed. We wanted to give you the update of where we are. You know, part of what happened last year is we fixed things and it kind of happened out of our general public discussion. I think none of, nobody really sort of vocalized, hey, this is the challenge. So, I'm asking you to talk about seven and eight, not for anything that we're proposing immediately, but to kind of foreshadow, these are some of the things that were kicking around as we start thinking about next year's budget and beyond.
And here's, um, yeah, some of the things that we felt. We're not able to replace the two administrative cars and they're gonna need to be replaced at some time. You know, within another year or two, they, they've outlived their life. Not being able to replace the detail cars, you know, and that's, you know, these cars are already paid for and, and they're basically, after they go through patrol, they go through, uh, the administration and then they go to detail. Once they're done with detail, they're really spent cars. So, those, what's happening is everything's just kinda backing up. Um, we, we have unsafe, unreliable frontline cars. We have car five and six that are frontline cars that are constantly breaking down. Officers are forced to double up into cruisers. The cruisers are, it's more than just a car. It's, it's the officer's workspace. You know, that's where they work. And it, it does, it does affect the morale of the, of your police officers when they're in there and they have a car that's either breaking down or unable to make it to calls or, uh, just really poor shape. Uh, you know, and the residents, you know, they deserve, you know, excellence from their police department, which would include reliable cruisers. I think people expect that when they call the police department, uh, that a cruiser's coming. You know, and it's not gonna be, uh, two officers doubling up in the car because we, that's all we have. You know, I don't think, I don't think that's fair to the residents. And that was the conclusion of that. Uh, the cost of it, the, uh, the Ford Interceptor is 25,927. That's the Mass State bid. The upfitting is the 12,661. Um, the other cost was the Fusion. That was just looking forward, uh, potentially in the future. Looking at some of the type of smaller car, less, uh, less, less taxing, less upfitting. You would put, um, you wouldn't put cages in the detail cars is a number of things that could be looked at.
Chief, when you say Interceptor, is that the same car we have now or is that?
It is.
Sitting, okay.
Yeah. It's a crossover vehicle.
Is that upfitting? Is that pro, pro car?
Yes. But this will be the last year we'll have to do that, cause once, once you get the four cars outfitted, then you only purchase the car. All the stuff gets switched over. Unless there's a change in the model. But, you know, in the foreseeable future, I don't see that. It looks, it looks like this is what it's gonna be for right now. Then we would just, like we did in the 2010 Crown Vex, right now, we still have the same equipment in it. We just moved it over. Uh, some of the cages had failed, uh, and we replaced those last year to try and keep that, uh, to keep those safe. Cause you were able to actually pull, pull the glass apart and reach in and grab the AR-15. So, those were fixed.
Chief, let me ask.
Questions?
If you step away from Ford and you go to another brand, is there any cheaper options? Might not be ideal. Is there cheaper options?
I think they're roughly the same price. The problem is, is the upfitting. Cause when, uh, let's say we're getting ready to get rid of the, the crossover and we're gonna move to a Dodge, now the upfitting, now you have to switch all your upfitting costs to that.
And the other challenge too, Steve, is when the truck, when there's a different vehicle, different layout, an officer gets in one vehicle versus the other, they gotta relearn, right? So if you're in a Dodge versus?
Yeah, well, they still have to relearn. We put them in the rest of these explorers.
I totally agree, but...
I mean, I can drive my wife's car in my truck perfectly fine.
But I'm talking about, I'm talking about where the, where the, where the lights are, where the computer sits. It's a little bit different layout, right?
I understand. I mean, the commonality of, of the vehicle. And then moving forward, let's say, three years from now, you're just putting the same equipment into the, the next cars. You're not trying to outfit a Dodge to a Ford.
I do understand, but just truthfully, seeing this is what sparked my mind. I mean, maybe you run two all-wheel drives and you run two of something else. And then that way, there, if it was a cheaper option, you know what I mean? And then when you have to replace the all-wheel drive, you replace it with a light vehicle, so. That was, that was the only thing I was thinking.
If I remember from when we went through this process to decide, almost all the police class vehicles were all all-wheel drive now. Even the sedan version of that, the difference in price was a thousand dollars.
1,600 is what it was.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so, you know.
And you get, you get more room in the, in the crossover. Which in a small town, I mean, uh, you, you have places like Nashua that they have an accident reconstruction team that come out. They have burglary, crime scene guys that come. We do it all. We have to keep all of our stuff in, in our cars.
Any other questions or thoughts or ideas or, I mean?
So, let's go back to the cars here. Three and four are the frontline, all-wheel drives.
Yes.
Five and six are the pieces of junk that would nurse them through.
Yes.
And they're front lines, right there.
Yeah, they're frontline cars. Yeah, they're frontline cars.
And then seven and eight are our detail cars.
Correct.
Okay. So five and six, from a standpoint of condition, you say is poor?
Yes.
At best?
Yes. Not reliable.
Right. What did we just do to fix, which one did we fix? Seven, six?
Five and- Six, six just came back today.
Five just came back last week, right?
Right.
Cause they're going on almost bi-weekly?
Yeah, anyhow, and we could lose them, we lost six for over a week.
Five.
Five.
Five. Well, I mean, but, but part of, part of what kicked this off was when five went this time. There was a conversation that the chief and I had, like, two weeks ago, saying enough. We need to, we need to pause for a moment and check back in and kind of have this conversation um, of wh- at, at, at what point are we comfortable continuing to invest in these versus, you know, looking at what else is out there, you know?
And then six died and now we had-
And yeah, and then six died. I'm like, okay, see, I, we can't keep doing this.
The numbers you're giving us go back to January first of two thousand thirteen.
Right.
So with that being said, the money since two thousand thirteen to date, we could've virtually bought new cars, I think.
Yes.
So. How many cars do you have to have frontline?
Four.
If they're running perfect, you have to have four?
Yes.
Because we have four cars on the road all the time?
No, cause what happens is you don't wanna run them twenty-four seven.
Sixteen shifts, sixteen hour shifts, right?
Yeah, they work six, they do sixteen hour shifts.
So why couldn't you rotate three?
It's the, cause we have overlapping shifts. We have the ten hour shifts where we have supervisors. So, and that's where you'll see, uh, like the supervisor vehicle will have less mileage on it. You know, and that was one of the contentions last year or the year before, was that, that one car had less mileage on it. It's cause it's a supervisor's car. Doesn't mean it's not running, you know, that amount of time, it just had less mileage.
So is car four a one of the supervisor cars?
Car three was, now it's just, now it's a free-for-all. Whatever car's out there, just grab it and go.
I mean, in theory, the other thing is we know that you, you run about a hundred and twenty thousand miles a year. And so thirty, thirty thousand per vehicle, uh, per year is the goal. Obviously, you know, you, you'll be over, under a little bit, you know, if that supervisor runs over, you kind of stretch what we had talked about. In the perfect world, when you start from zero with four all at once, whatever one you run as a supervisor will be lower miles, one will trend higher, you flip it to smooth them out. So, you, you, you know, three means you, you reach that threshold faster. I mean, it's kinda what you're seeing when you go back to the mileage numbers on the two reliable vehicles now are all trending higher than that thirty per year.
My only, my concern is that right now, we're on a default budget, the money's not there. The issue, as I see it, is at best, we could wait towards the end of the year and see where the budget is. Well, I think we can ask, Jason, how are we trending as to date?
Uh. We have some space actually within, within the police department budget, uh, going through, if you look sort of at my projections to date. Um, the advantage of a default budget is everybody kinda tightens their belt. So, I mean, I, I'm feeling better about most of our departments. You know, it's not great, but I think people are, you know, being prudent and responsible. The interesting thing in the police department is, uh, we've had a couple circumstances this year. Uh, we've had, we have a vacant position, uh, with, uh, departure of Sergeant Costa. Uh, and unfortunately, we've had some chunks of, um, employees on medical leave. Both of those things have meant that our wage and benefit lines are not trending where they would be when we're at full staff. Uh, making some accommodations, um, through the whole police budget for, you know, that is not all back avoided wages. You know, there are parts of this that we actually need to compensate for in, um, in overtime in other areas. We just can't go without constantly. I'm showing about twenty thousand, um, available, uh, trended through the end of the year in the police department. Um, you know, and you know my numbers, I tend to, I tend to go conservatively on those, expecting several of the worst-case scenarios. And I've asked the chief to look through what I did and say, tell me if I'm missing anything. Um, I'm not real eager to, yet to start sort of shuffling from department to department on things. Um, you know, there, each department sort of has its own issues they're dealing with. We're trending well in some areas, uh, you know, we've got killed in winter in other areas. Um. The twenty plus, um, the unanticipated revenue we just spoke about at the beginning of the meeting of about sixteen, seventeen thousand gets you just about in that right ballpark. You could purchase one outright. There's no way that I could possibly, um, in good faith, tell you what, where we're trending on numbers, that you could purchase two outright. Purchase one outright, um, or you could entertain another lease notion of sorts. Those are, that's the obvious money that's out there. Um, you know, there are more radical ideas too of where other funds are available. Uh, you do have the ability, uh, through some warrant articles, um, if they're not special warrant articles, to redeploy those funds. You're, I'm real hesitant to make that recommendation. It is a tool you have in your tool basket and, you know, it's something-
I got crucified two meetings ago when I mentioned the thought of that.
I mean, I mean, there, you know, you know, legally you have options. Um, practically, those are the things you have to weigh. But, um, like I said, I could, I can tell you that if with those two sources from the trending within his department and the sixteen, you could get in the ballpark for one. Or you could enter into a lease and make a twenty, thirty thousand dollar down payment and, you know, do something like in a two-years, a two-year cycle, you know, of thirty and thirty or something like that, and roll them both in.
I, I mean, one would relieve the pressure, but I'm not sure it's gonna solve the problem long, it's not gonna solve the problem long term.
It, it, I mean, I, I think what you heard is you have, you have two problem vehicles, how you deal with it. On the other hand, the other issue we have is kind of this, the issue that started in ten of leasing four at once and kind of this rolling issue. And then continuing to have accumulating lease payments, whether they're staggered, not staggered, or anything else. Uh, get, buying one outright and kind of swallowing hard and finding the money for it gets you out of part of that cycle of continuing to stack future lease payments.
Let's just be clear about the two thousand ten event. We obviously thought there was an emergency, we did it. The intent was, the priority of the board, the intent was to somehow figure out the schedule over the next couple of years. We just didn't make it a priority and we got caught.
Well, not only that, it's also the increased cost because of having to outfit.
Well, true, right.
That was, that was the real kicker.
Well, that was, that's what drove us down to get it done right away. And, but over the next three years, we were, we were supposed to figure out what that plan was gonna be.
The, the board was fully aware at the time-
Yeah.
As to what was gonna happen, that the numbers that were being put forward in terms of cost savings, which were stip- which were about eight thousand a vehicle, were make-believe. And that was clearly told to the board at that time, and that we were gonna end up paying those costs-
Down the road.
Down the road.
And that's what's happening. And I, I think, well, I, why, my recollection of that was that we did it because it was gonna save us immediately. We didn't have the money, we needed the cars. But we should've, we, we were going to try to plan for that better, so when we got to that point, we had the money to save someplace. Whether, whatever we did, we, other things became priority and that was, at least that's my record.
How far over are we in the highway budget? That was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, that's the one, that's the one budget that, that concerns me.
Hold on a second. While Jason's looking that up, chief, how quick would you get a vehicle if we actually did pull the trigger? Uh, one or two of these ones that were on hold?
I could contact him tomorrow. Um, I'm not sure how long it would take him to outfit him.
What's a typical timeframe that you've seen?
Thirty to forty days the last time.
Yeah, somewhere around a month or so. Um, they're in their slow season now. They, uh, Massachusetts is a July to June thirtieth, so, um, we could, if we got in now, you'd be fine. Before the, before the July first rush of, uh, you know, Mass State Police and stuff like that hitting MHQ.
Yeah, cause I think we gave the authorization to buy the last two, or the first one anyway, in March, and we didn't get it to service line in May, so.
Um, at the moment, I'm showing us, uh, running about eight thousand over with the assumption of pulling eighteen thousand dollars in from the winter maintenance trust fund.
So it's still eighteen?
So we're still eight over even though you're gonna pull it in?
Yeah, I pulled eighteen in, yeah.
I wanna make sure I-
Okay, so, so in rea- if I don't take the trust fund, we're twenty-six.
That's what I need to know.
Yeah, if we don't take-
So we're twenty-six thousand into the bottom line over?
Yeah.
That's what you're projecting?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be running twenty-six over.
Your projections are assuming what for the winter?
That we have winter in November and December.
Yeah, I know how many-
I, I, right, I mean, I, I didn't take-
We all, we all realize we'll have winter, but how many storms are you calculating?
Um. Let me take a look and see. Um, we, we were-
Summer hasn't started yet.
I know.
Yeah.
It may be a great, easy winter.
It'd be okay.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would think four, two.
I mean, we, we have, we have a reasonable amount of salt stored right now, and so I'm figuring, um, one more load, uh, one more major load of salt replenishment there. Um, I also am assuming which, um, that will fully exhaust our contractor service line. So, um, there are, there are high assumptions built into my budget. I tend to assume horrible things will happen in December, so.
So where were you planning on absorbing the other eight thousand? Assuming we're back in December, we have eight thousand dollars to that bottom line.
Um, I, if you look at my overall, my overall projection, what I'm looking at at the moment is, um, I'm, I'm looking at us running about seventy-five hundred dollars down in legal, about four thousand down in personnel. Um, we mentioned about twenty in police. Uh, at the moment, we're trending, and I don't wanna count all of this money, but I'm showing us trending about eighteen thousand down in fire. And that can go away in a second with, well, all it takes is one call. The first five months were nice to us. Solid waste, uh, probably will end up about fifteen thousand to the good. Uh, we're seeing huge savings by changing the way that, uh, we're dealing with construction demolition debris and wood recycling. Uh, that has really brought that cost down. Um, and this is, you know, further than we had ex- in, uh, expected in, uh, budget time. The other thing through, you know, I have smaller pickups in, um, several of these departments against our, um, I've offset some places where we may be trading a little higher. Um, jumping ahead for a moment, uh, my numbers assume that we follow my recommendation for changing health insurance. So, uh, when we looked at revised numbers after this, I showed an increase for six months based on the, the new rates from Health Trust. Um, this assumes that we leave Health Trust after two months and then our rates fall.
We just sunk a bunch of money, as chief said, I think twenty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, into those vehicles. Um, new vehicles generally hit the market in September. I would really recommend that we wait until September timeframe. We've got the money that we put into the vehicles, we've got them refurbished to a certain extent. And what we do is make a decision later in the year when the budget's clearer, when the new vehicles are out there. And when we, um, get a better picture of where we are, where we stand.
Do, it, it, the only, the only issue I have, and you know, for, for me, the, in one way, waiting until the numbers come clear is always satisfying. It's always a little unnerving to go, um, in a different direction early. The only issue I'd have is I think that we're not dealing in the consumer market. I think your point on the September for the consumer market is valid. I think for the public safety market, you have first quarter of the year and July. Because, uh, people are on the calendar year or the fiscal year, and we're less subject to the consumer market. So I, I'd be worried that we may not see anything happen in September or worse. What we see in September is there are no public safety vehicles available.
MHQ had two left for this year.
Only two thousand fourteen, two thousand thirteen miles. I think that the problem is the unknown, right? So we sunk a lot of money into these cars over the last year and a half. We have a budget that's tight. All it's gonna take is another breakdown, and it's gonna be a few more thousand dollars in repairs. I, I don't know what the right answer is, but-
I mean, the, the, the other thought is, I mean, we kind of informally said, hey, enough's enough. I mean, the other thing may well be that, um, if you choose not to pursue anything now, pick the target and say, double back when, you know, when repair, repair costs from this point forward hit X, we need to still have that conversation.
But we're spending money on cars we're gonna get rid of. It just doesn't make, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like it makes good sense to keep on pouring money into these things.
What were the last repairs you had?
Um, there was something wrong with the steering in car six. Um, they changed bushings, stabilizers, um-
Should've heard, it was like popcorn.
It was, it was bad. They said you could hear it from Albuquerque from, to here. It was screaming so loud. Um, and that was over a thousand dollars. It was like a thousand forty, somewhere around there.
So is five still not running?
Five is now, both of them are now running. We just got six back this morning.
Ideas?
I, I'd agree with, uh, Mr. Byron, as far as, you know, wait till September, see what we got, see, you know, where the budget stands. You know, revisit it back then, you know?
And what's the safe, where, where's the, uh, the pull cord when you have another breakdown? Do we rethink it then? And then unfortunately, at that point, these two cars won't be available, or one car won't be available at least anyway. I mean, what happens in July, we have another breakdown, right? This time an engine, or?
The five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
How much money we got left in the, uh, repairs, budget, maintenance costs, whatever we wanna call it here?
Um. I don't have the most recent ones in. I took, um, I think we're in, uh, we think we probably charged about five thousand so far, pre-five and six.
Yeah, so add another three thousand.
Right, and my, and my, my projection, um, I took, we, we, our, our adjusted budget put fourteen thousand in that line. My projection calls it sixteen, so I, I put some additional space in my projection expecting-
According to the last report, it was eight thou- eight, nine thousand dollars in that line.
Is left or spent?
Left.
Left.
Left, right.
Over half spent.
Right, so yeah, my, my projection, I added some more space in there. Because even if you decided to replace everything, those vehicles aren't gonna be in service and available anyway. So, you know, you could, you could decide tonight, yeah, buy two. I, pennies from, I, God knows where, but you know, you figured by two. And then, you know, five and six die again tomorrow, I'm still two months out, best possible case of seeing new vehicles coming in. So the reality is that, you know, and, and this is why we budget at the front end of the year. Uh, if you remember how we broke down that number, we budgeted higher repairs for the first couple of months of the year, thinking that even if we decided to pursue something after town meeting, um, you know, those vehicles don't just magically turn up, kitted out, ready to roll.
We had a hard time finding the two that we got, and you didn't get bid price, you paid three thousand dollars more than you should've paid. So, one we found in Vermont, the other one we found down on the Cape. So once, once these are sold, it's not like they have a hundred of them sitting there waiting for, you know, PDs to come, come in. They, they get so many. Cause they're committed to that. They're not gonna sit around, MHQ's not gonna sit around with a hundred cars just waiting for departments to break down. Generally, if it's not in the budget, then they have no, no obligation to keep those cars. They found two, and that's, that's what they have, you know? And they'll hold that, they'll hold that till-
You're talking to the-
They'll hold it till tomorrow, but after that, there's, you know, if somebody comes in to buy them, they're selling them.
Have we asked what a lease purchase on these would be?
Uh, no, because we can, I mean, generally, our terms of lease purchase has been, we craft our own reasonable deal, so. You know, I mean, you know that you're buying, what, um, sixty, you're buying seventy thousand dollars worth of vehicle, so. You know, spread that out over three years, you're looking at twenty, twenty-something a year.
I mean, I, I mean, I, I would, I would suggest we do one, not two. Maybe rethink it in September, you know, get the one to relieve the pressure. We look at it in September and decide what to do at that point, but I can't swallow two, not with where the budget is. But I understand the need, that's the challenge, right? And I get it. And the, if we were to, one- And if we were to, one, lease payment, it's, you know, we're looking at ten thousand dollar payment versus.
Yeah.
Roughly, maybe twelve.
Yeah, I mean, if you split it evenly, yeah.
Yeah, I just.
Right, exactly, so. The, the challenge is, and I guess, you know, that's why, you know, is I'm, you continue to stack more future lease payments.
Right, there's nothing actually stopping us from rewriting those leases and rolling them all back into one again.
What do we owe on the two we got left?
Two years.
Any idea?
Yeah, well, yeah, uh, we owe in round numbers, let me tell you. Hold on a sec. We owe in eighty, eighty-two thousand dollars on those two. Because the lease we entered in, uh, you, uh, well, yeah, well, did, did, what, because we, we bought the two, and we bought the camera system, and we put everything in together. And last year, what ended up happening is we opted for a low first year payment, because we needed to corral money to pay for repairs for the two that we were keeping. So we did a low first year and a higher second and third year, rather than a smooth price across.
Originally, when we bought those four cars, when we were back in two thousand and ten, the theory behind that was, is that the whole fleet was crap, so we were trying to replace in a nice clean swoop. We were supposed to develop over the next, we planned on two years to bring in a system of bringing a new car in, and we didn't touch it.
Right, we didn't do it.
So now what we've done is we've exhausted our life expectancy of the four cars that have come in. We've only replaced them with two, and now we're limping through.
Yeah, and we replaced them with two, we had, we were approved for three, we got approved for three. Or no, we, I'm sorry. We went through the budget process, we went with four. We were able to prioritize and we were able to put three into the budget. We received a default, yeah, default, and then we were able to take, again, re-prioritize and go for three. And I think the board decided two because of the default, which makes sense at the time. But, um, if I have that right. I mean, introducing one new car right now would at least help offset the, go back to two, one, maybe two model, if we can somehow Band-Aid and, you know, one of those other cars for another year, but.
It's gonna take us three years to get back to where we need to be.
I know. There's no easy answer.
No, I know.
And money's the issue, and we don't have the money.
Even if we do two cars, it's still gonna take you three years to get back to.
Money's the issue, the safety's the issue, the unknown is the issue. There's a whole bunch of issues on the table, and I don't see any really, really simple way of solving it. I mean, I, I would be supportive of one, I'm, I'm not supportive of two, not, not until we see where we're at, come September or October. I mean, if we can afford to pay for it outright, that's probably a better move.
I think that, after hearing we still owe eighty on two that we can buy for seven, six.
But just, but remember, the two.
Blows my mind.
Remember, the two, the two included all the outfit for the other four, right? So it included the two, the two new cars, all the new equipment, but it also included the upgrades required to make five and six patrol worthy, or six actually patrol worthy. Um, and that's the camera system and stuff that was embedded into the environment. That's why that cost is, as you said, it's higher than what you would expect it. Or you would think for this two cruisers, it has all the costs. And the equipment, other than the cage, the electronics will come out of the five and six and get moved into the new cruiser. It's just a cage and light bar and all, so it would not.
And the outfit cost still gonna be twelve grand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the outfit cost, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because when we bought, because we baked the camera system into the last year's plan, couldn't run. We needed one camera system to cover all the vehicles, so we bought it.
As one project, yeah.
Right, we bought it as one project with the anticipation of replacing the two other vehicles in fourteen. And so we ate the capital cost once, knowing that the cars would be somewhat less expensive this year, because the video system is not part of the setup this year.
Well, none of this helps you guys, does it?
No.
I'm, I'm in shock, I really am. That's amazing.
What's amazing, sorry?
That, that we owe more money on two vehicles than they're worth after we've already made a year and a half's worth of lease payments. It just blows my mind that you guys didn't buy the camera systems outright. Instead, we're now stuck behind the eight ball.
Well, no, you leased, basically you did a lease, a financing plan for the camera system too in addition to the cruisers. Take, take the value of the cars out, that's separated, they're all listed as capital items within that lease. They're, they stand on their own, it's just a total amount.
I understand.
So if we had just, if we had bought the camera system separately, did differently, the total amount would not have changed. It's just now you save one's cruisers and one's electronics, right? It's the same dollar amount.
What's the other money that we got? The Penechuk money, right? How much was that?
Sixteen thousand, sixteen, seven fifty.
We, we, we don't, we haven't had a public carrier to accept it, so. But it is, I just paid.
Well, I'm not gonna not accept it, how's that?
No, I, no, that's not what I'm talking about. Point is really, I don't think you can allocate it until you know.
Right, but if you wanna know where the money could come from, those are the likely, those are the likely sources. And you're not writing a check.
If we were, if we were, if we were to decide to do one cruiser, we're looking at thirty-eight, thirty-eight five for one cruiser completely bought outright. The twenty thousand dollars in the police department fund, due to the fact that we have labor differences, doesn't mean that it's going down. It's just we've got some gaps this year, which allows us to do that. Plus the sixteen five, that would allow us to do this. I mean, we have to make up a couple thousand, but.
Right. You know, the, the alternative I, I'd ask you to think about is if, if that ends up being a direction the board's not comfortable in going. Um, I think the other piece of guidance we'd be looking for then is what's your, what's your threshold number for repairs on five and six that you would like us to double back? Because, you know, I mean, part of our concern last year is, we knew we had them, we just kept fixing them. Um, so, and, you know, and.
Zero, but that's unreal.
Right, I mean, but, and, you know, I, I wanna make sure we all understand kind of how we're committing, uh, the funds.
Well. I mean, worst case is it ending, right? So five grand.
How bad is six? Six has twenty thousand less miles than five.
They're in bad shape. But when we trade them, and we'll, we'll be lucky if we get a thousand for them. So we're putting twenty-two thousand dollars into two thousand dollar cars, is what we're doing.
I mean, the other side of the argument is you did repairs, that shouldn't have been the vehicle at that point of road.
But it's been, it's twenty-two thousand dollars later, it's still, they're still breaking down. I mean, they're, they're police cars, they get, I mean.
I, I for one understand.
You know, I mean, you understand, you understand the dynamics of it, I mean.
It's.
And when, and when they break down, we're beating up on the, the brand-new cars that are, you know, now gonna last two years instead of three.
Does anybody have any recommended actions other than, I mean, we've talked about not doing anything, but. Just. I'll throw it out there. I will make a motion that we approve one purchase outright of a new police cruiser and put in service as soon as possible at the dollar amount of thirty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars, for the funds to come out of the projected savings in the police department and the potential, the acceptance of the water district refund. Do I have a second?
I'm gonna give you a second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Perry. Discussion. So, I just justify why, I, I think we gotta do something. I, I'm hesitant to do anything too. I, I, I totally understand where Frank's coming from, I, Kevin, the same thing. But my fear is if we wait till September, we're going into the hottest months, where those vehicles will get even more wear and tear. You know, what's, what is it, what, what is enough? I don't know, if I, it was, if it was my personal car and it cost me twenty thousand dollars, keep it world-worthy, I wouldn't be spending the, spend the money to put a golf, buy a new one. So that's the only, I mean, ultimately, I believe we have to have the cruisers, I agree with the four-car rotation. I've seen cars three and four be, you know, I see the abuse that's already happening in those cars just because they're in the rotation heavily. I mean, I'm supportive of doing something, I just don't know what the right answer is. I just think this is part of the system.
As I said before, there's too much opportunity for other things to go wrong in the budget. Um, and I understand that the police presence in the community is a high priority, that's not the point. Um, I just think that, uh, we're only halfway through this budget. We're already over twenty-six thousand dollars over in highway. We're under in other departments, I understand it's a mixed bag, and I just don't think right now is the right time to do that.
Jason, to, to Mr. Byron's point, where are we tracking at the bottom line?
Right now, um, I would, I'm projecting, um. Uh, I'm, I'm projecting about sixty-two thousand under.
And, and that's factoring in all the things we talked about earlier.
That's.
The room that was created inside the police budget because of departures.
That, that's, yeah, that's factoring in sort of the trends that I'm seeing at the moment. It is also factoring in using that eighteen thousand from the trust fund.
Yeah.
For highway.
So you're talking how much, sixty thousand?
Yeah.
Sixty thousand, right?
So we're actually forty thousand.
Yeah. Right, right.
Forty-four. He was at sixty-two.
Yeah, I mean, well, but, I mean, if, if you, if you remember when we looked at the, um, I, I think when we looked at the proposed, uh, that would, you know, revising this budget, um, after, uh, after town meeting, um, you know, there was an assumption built in at that point of having to tap the trust fund. Um, if, you know, and again, that was sort of, kick, kick it out as long as possible, you don't wanna do that. I mean, I, in my, in my mind, that's a, a decision the board would visit in December. If you can make it up without using the trust fund, you don't wanna, because once you take it out, it's gone.
So I, I get the unknown concern, especially around the overall budget. But, and, and to Mr. Byron's point, and the police, the police, the cruisers are a priority, I think we all agree that. If we wait and one of these cruisers are responding to an event, and it breaks down, that's an issue. If one of these cruisers break down and creates a safety problem and someone gets hurt, that's an issue. We have, we have a known problem, we're hearing from the departments saying the two cars are unsafe. Um, well, we're hearing from the department, the cars are, you know, they're, 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 they're getting tired, they're having problems, they've had safety issues. They're being, obviously being repaired, but what's the next breakdown? So wouldn't it be more wise to address something we know potentially has got a value to it? I mean, again, what's, what's the number we stop at? So come, come next month, we're now looking at three thousand, four thousand dollars more repairs. Is that enough to make us do something?
Again, I think you're getting to the unknown, you know? They may not have any more repairs for the rest of the year.
That's true.
You know what I mean? So it's just that, you see, it's the balance thing. Again, I'm, I'm with Frank on the budget thing, you know?
I'm sorry. No, Kevin was still talking, I'm sorry.
You know, in worst-case scenario, if something does happen and we do have major failure, then, you know, us as a board need to sit down again and say, hey, you know, we need to do something.
But the problem is, what, what will we be able to do? If there's no cars available to us until September, let's say, or whenever the next window of time, you know, how do we deal with that? We can't go to enterprise rental and rent the car.
Not only that, you could be a month or two out from the thing coming in. Even if it's available.
Right, well, we already know that if we were to approve one or two cars, we're looking at thirty to forty days anyway.
Oh, I understand that.
So we already have thirty or forty days, but if we, you know, if one car dies again, we just deal with it for a period of time.
You know, in the, in the realm of the way the budget rolls, if the police don't have vehicles, they don't show up to your house. How's somebody gonna feel if they make a call and the police break down halfway there and it takes an extra ten minutes to get to a domestic call?
Well, that's my concern.
Is that, is that, I, I, I wor-.
That's my concern.
And I, I worry about stuff like that.
That's the what ifs, right? If we can somehow make something better and, and, and we've combined it in, you know, confined it into a known, why would we not? I mean, why would we wait?
So I just wanna analyze from a, from a financial perspective, what you're talking of doing by this motion. And what you're talking of doing is you're talking of now investing thirty-five thousand dollars, some change, thirty-eight thousand dollars into cars.
One car.
Into the car pool, whatever you wanna call it, or the gene pool, or wherever you wanna go.
Yep.
You're talking about doing that, and you're worried that what happens if we have another three or four thousand? Well, the balance on that is pretty straightforward to me. Three or four thousand, or spend another thirty-five thousand, worry about what happens in the budget come the end of the year. I'll spend the three or four thousand every day of the week, and I know it's going into a car that's probably not even worth that much. But that's what we got to live with.
But going back to even Steve's point, my, or point earlier, what happens if one of those cars are responding to an event, breaks down in the response?
I can't deal in hypotheticals. What happens if car three or?
That's what we have to deal with.
What happens if three?
A new car.
Can I, can I complete what I was gonna say?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. What happens if three or four breaks down during a response? We have no assurance at any point in time that any car, even a brand-new one you drive into the yard today, is gonna make it to a scene. We do what we have to do.
Right, but there's a higher, a higher likelihood that the newer cars will not experience any problems. We already know that the older cars are experiencing issues, which is one of the reasons why we justified replacing them in the first place.
I think it's ludicrous that it's gotten to this point.
Well, I agree.
That's the, that's the issue that I have, that I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around.
This, you know.
I, I think, I also think it's irresponsible to push eighty thousand dollars worth of lease payments the second year you're into them on two vehicles worth seventy-six thousand dollars. But that's beyond the point, okay? I have a real issue with the thought of one of these men getting into a car, and not only not making a call, but possibly getting injured. And if you don't think that that's more likely in a car with eighty or a hundred thousand miles than a brand-new car or a car with thirty thousand miles, you're insane. So. I hate to say it, and it's probably not the right time, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be in favor of buying one car, and I'm also gonna say that something else is gonna get pushed down the line to add on to the amount of money that we've already pushed down the line. That's the way I feel. I think it's irresponsible, this board, to not see that.
My only question, Eddie, is, is you're saying these are frontline, frontline cars with eighty and a hundred thousand miles. If, if that's the case with you, with the safety concern, then why are they frontline cars?
Because we have no other options.
We have no other cards. You don't have anything else.
But, but, my, my question is, if, I guess what I'm trying to say is if they're that unsafe, don't put the, don't put people in them. You know, and I, I understand they're frontline and you need to do it.
We, we actually, two of those cars were deadlined. We had, uh, we have, we're supposed to have two-man patrols, we're putting two guys in one car. And that's what, and that's what this is, the result of this is.
It's, it's tough, you know, because.
Yeah, the, the next option is, do we just park and wait for a call to come?
Every year, we debate about the miles of the car and what makes a car unsafe, or, or frontline worthy. We've come up with a formula that it's between eighty and ninety thousand dollars. We're working on a thirty thousand mile a year on a car. When we say it goes, the fleet, it gets moved from frontline down to detail, just to shift towards workload, so it's different style. The issue around safety, you know, whether a car, whether five and six is purely safe or not, I think at this point, if the cars are on the road, if they are safe for frontline duty, the problem is, is that frontline duty adds more and more wear and tear in those vehicles, and more breakdowns are gonna be prone. The car not being able to respond, it's not necessarily a safety issue, it's a, it's a mechanical issue that could happen, right? A brake failure, I guess you'd call that a safety issue, but, um, an engine not starting, I mean, we've had dead electrical systems, we've had all kinds of problems with these two cars. Um, and we keep on throwing money in it, and, and like I said, I, I'm concerned about us not being able to respond to the public. I'm concerned about the officers in those cars not being able to, you know, not be able to respond and, and, and to be able to drive a safe vehicle, or at least a mechanically sound vehicle. Um, and I am concerned about the next big payment, right? We, we're, we're, our budget's tight, and if we lose it, and then it's five grand, and where are we gonna be? We're gonna be forced to put five grand into the car because we can't get cars. So it seems like, this is, and we got in this debate last time, we did the two to three to what? We're all hesitant to do it, but we have a problem, and we gotta fix it.
One other observation, just in terms of funding on this. Think, you know, we, we've shown you a scenario where you could identify the money in the budget. I would suggest that if you do give a go-ahead, you know, that's kind of, that you use that as a fallback, and the direction to me is to come back with some options, which may be buy it outright or a lease scenario or two. You know, we showed a way we can do it. On the other hand, when you look at my projection, yeah, I can, I can show the money there. I'm also showing us trending at ninety-nine percent of budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's-
Scary.
That's a scary spot to be in. You know, it, you know, and we, you know, you see me every, every December kind of get paranoid about dipping below that. Ninety-nine percent of budget is a frightening place. People will take a number out of context and say, oh, you know, you have tens of thousands of dollars. No, we have, we're talking about one percent of budget left, so I think we have a possibility of doing it. That said, I would suggest that if you do proceed, that we actually have a more detailed. I didn't pull any plans on final numbers or leases or anything else, because the other issue to weigh is the balance of cash versus a lease scenario and what that would look like.
Further discussion? Or amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained? Motion passed?
Fails.
Fails, two, two, zero. Okay. Any other thoughts or any other motions on this subject?
Well, like I said, you know, I would say, you know, come September, we take a look, revisit the budget. I mean, you're talking about three, four months away and-
Talk about two cars at that point.
Yeah, you will be talking about two cars at that point.
Again, I just think the bu- budget is, you know, the unknown is... The unknown, I guess.
Okay.
Chief Lieutenant? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys. Be safe.
Just, not with this here. All right. Let's take a break, let's open the floor for public input. Anybody from the public that'd like to speak, please step forward, state your name and address.
Chris Pescucci, G-12 Colonial.
Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, good discussion, that was an hour of discussion. For, um, something that should have lasted about five minutes. It's clear, it's evident, we need, we got old cruisers, we need new cruisers. That's not the point, that's the end, that's the goal. What you guys are trying to do is you're trying to justify and rationalize the way to get to that end, that goal. You, uh, you guys do a good job, you convinced the Budget Committee, the Budget Committee's on board. Yeah, need new cruisers. You certainly convinced yourselves, you need new cruisers. Budget Committee's not the final say. The Board of Selectmen are the final say for certain issues and for certain parts of issues, but the Budget Committee cannot approve a multi-year lease. You do have the right to buy them outright if there's money, but we still have the cruisers last year that were purchased that, which I just learned, a lot more is owed on them. What they're worth, but if you calculate everything into there, but those are in fact not approved. And there's eighty thousand dollars left on a lease that has not been approved by the legislative body. I know this board has gotten opinions from a year or two ago, from a different conversation in another town about what you think is right. You guys have said you feel comfortable with the decision you made. You say you believe you have the right to make it, but I haven't heard anybody on this board say that you are one hundred percent within the law with that, with that decision. I think it is, Mr. Perry brought up the point, it was irresponsible, and I think we're getting deeper. We do have an obligation, just like the chief said, we have a high expectation that when you call, the police is gonna show up. We have a fine police force, they should be in the right cars. And you could get the right cars, all you need to do is very simple, ask the voter and get voter approval. It's a very simple, simple process, which in the hour-long discussion today was never brought up once, never. It was just, how else could we get them? Never brought up, let's just ask the voter. It's actually very simple, and I think the voter was very clear when they approved, both in the town and the school, most warrants other than the budgets. So now I see us getting deeper next year, and now the obvious question is, what if the proposed budget fails next year? We're deeper in the hole with all of this new stuff, and so far the two unapproved leases from last year. So, um, we, we do, the voters do deserve excellence in police force, but we also deserve excellence in our elected members to do the right thing. So please, get the right cruisers and get them in the right fashion, please, thank you.
Good evening. Jason, great eleven, Perry Court. I, I guess I, I've been hearing from here and there that, um... This whole police cruiser discussion is, you know, can't discuss this, we can't discuss that because there's a pending lawsuit, this, that, really isn't. I've made reference to the fact that what I believe, what the, what used to be the LGC, the New Hampshire Municipal Association attorneys believe about how we purchased our cruisers, there's no question, and the chief just validated that with all of his numbers, that we need new cruisers, there's no question. So that's kind of a moot point. It's about how to get there. I'm not suing the town, so if somebody, if somebody is thinking that, that's erroneous, because I believe the board will do the right thing. So there's no pending lawsuit, there's no pending action, because I believe you guys are gonna do the right thing. The right thing is to purchase the lease out or give them back. That makes it hard to operate, but it's because of past actions of the Board of Selectmen that we're in this position. So while it not may be each of you individually, the Board of Selectmen have put us in this position now where we've got to make some very, very difficult choices. And all I heard tonight was, how do we compound and make those even worse? Because like Mr. Pescucci said, we still have to deal with the devil that's in front of us before we go create another. And unfortunately, the devil in the details is this, the legislative body has not approved those two cruisers. And until they do, we're in violation, so we have to deal with that before we move ahead. Now... Firewall? Am I the guy to actually do that? I'm the guy that's gonna actually push the button. So I ask that we don't even go there, we don't. Go ask an attorney if you're correct in this moment before we go create other issues. I've not seen that attorney's opinion, and it would be your right to not share it. However, in the numbers that we're talking about, a couple hundred bucks of an attorney's time to make sure that we've, we're not creating another issue before we settle the current one, is to me very prudent. Right? Before you go adding more leases, you could create another lease right now, you could go purchase one, but if you created a lease right now, that's okay, well within your bounds. But then you have to have the legislative body on a multi-year lease authorize that. That's not happened yet in this town. Two straight budgets have failed. And so we're operating under an operating budget, not a default budget. Default budget is something just for an election, but we have exactly the same amount of money we had last year plus on top of it. So we have more money than we had last year to cover all the, the extra costs. But I implore you, please fix the current problem before creating another, or eighty thousand. Nobody understood that till tonight. And we went and capitalized all of the other equipment into this conundrum. Right? Because even if we do turn them back in, let's just say that was the outcome, that we had to turn them back, we still owe on the lease. Because you can't, I mean, what do you do with the, the expendable equipment, right? So again, unfortunately, I'm only as good as my word, right? And so now, now you, you, the corporate you, have put me in a position to either put up or shut up. I'm asking you to do the right thing so we don't have to go down that road, because that seven thousand dollars in legal funds will go quickly, I'm sure. For no reason at all, except for the fact that we do the right thing, right? And I'm not gonna go croon about it, we're just gonna do the right thing and move along. That's all I'm asking, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Hearing none, closed public input. Continue on the agenda. Annual policy review. Does he intend to do purchasing, records retention, and social media?
If we can. Uh, purchasing. Generally the same policy, I'm, um, two, two administrative changes. Uh, one is for the purchases between three thousand and eleven ninety-nine. We currently say informal written bids from at least three sources must be obtained. What I adjusted that to read is must be solicited. In cases where fewer than three bids are received, the non-submitting vendors should be listed on the purchase order. It's all well and good to ask for three when you don't get three. This makes it sound like you can't act unless you actually have three people who actually submit, and there are times when we haven't had that. So, you know, in practice, what has happened is, you know, when we do the PO for it, we note also solicited from opted not to respond. The practice won't change, just sort of the reality issue there. And then the only other piece I had is, um, the not requiring bidding procedure. Um, and number six, we had with, um, town administrator, with prior notification to Selectment regular meeting, may approve for a certain set of things, and what I changed there was simply, let's call it notification. There are times that prior can be unwieldy, just if you're meeting every other week or less infrequently. It's not to hide or bury it, it's just, again, an operational logistical issue.
Okay? Any comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Byron. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries four, zero, zero. Next is, uh...
We're gonna do the vendor exception list, because this is related to the purchasing policy. Uh, we started doing this last year. This is a list for, for whom individual purchases might not exceed the PO threshold, but cumulative purchases of goods or services may exceed the threshold during the year. Or cases where we have a sole source existing contract. And whenever possible, even with a vendor on the exception list, those making purchases should investigate cost-saving alternatives. So, you know, there's certainly people on here, you may see multiple providers of similar services, so, um... This, um-
Are the new ones the ones that are italicized?
The new ones are the ones that are italicized, yes. And, um, nothing radically different here. The, uh, the new, the new additions are really places where we've changed vendor or in some cases, last year's the first year we did this, so at the benefit of hindsight, there were a couple that I should have put on last year's list that I probably didn't.
Yeah, like two A in Avanta?
Yeah, yeah, there were a couple of them, like, huh, that would have made sense to put on there.
So, explain to me again, this list is to do what?
This is, this is a list where the vendors for whom we may be in a situation where we, um, do not follow the, uh, purchase order, the purchasing policy requirement, because each individual item, in some cases, each individual item, um, may be less than the target threshold. The cumulative effect will be greater than that. Londonderry Ford, for example, at a thousand dollars a visit is well below the threshold. The cumulative purchases we make at Londonderry Ford will be-
These are all vendors we have business relationships with, they do pass work for us and we continue to use-
Right.
In small chunks.
Right.
So are we saying that you can basically go to them without following the purchasing policy?
No, uh, we're saying that we acknowledge that in, in, for, most of these vendors, there is, uh, there are situations where we may not be following the purchasing policy because of the ongoing effect of their sole source or the cumulative effect of one purchase is small. Purchases over twelve months would put it over the threshold if we were buying it all at once.
I, I, I'm failing to understand how taking a car to Ford of Londonderry could be viewed as a single purchase if you lump it together for a year's worth of expenditures. I mean, common sense says you don't do that.
Well, common sense-
And common sense says that, you know, you treat each individual visit as a one-off event. So that's why I'm trying to understand what exactly is the purpose of this list? If the purpose of the list is to say that if you were to happen to add them all together, you'll exceed the purchase policy limit, so what?
Well, in, in part, it's to protect all of us from this, this notion of, okay, you're not supposed to have artificial division. So some of these, you could argue, okay, well, you know, I am spending fifty thousand dollars on this, but I'm spending it in, you know, four twelve thousand, five hundred dollar chunks, but it's fifty thousand dollars overall. Basically, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to make sure that when we pull a vendor history for the year and we look at the purchasing policy and I have vendors that, you know, the cumulative spend is over the thresholds, that we have a logical connection to say, okay, we knew that those would be over.
I, I just don't get it, Jason, I really don't. I mean, you've got down here Gale Uniform as an example. Okay, so Chief O'Brien purchases some uniforms. Fire Chief purchases some individual guys that's there at odd times in the year, need parts of their uniform, they go purchase them.
Right.
So what?
I mean, I always looked at this list as being, these are vendors that we, we have approved and have relationships with, not necessarily excluding from any policy, just, these are the ones we go do. We buy from Brox, we buy from DLB, we do the different things, they're just vendors, we have ongoing business relationships.
Yeah, but, but I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking the question, why would we even want to compile a list of that per se? If what you're saying is that you're gonna recognize a list as single source, I think that has some merit. But if what you're saying is we just do business with Donovan Equipment or Diggadee's Landscapes or whatever the case may be, so what? Why do we want to even put it into a list? That's, that's why I'm failing to have a-
Well, we created this list last year, and I, I don't remember-
I, I think we did, we, we created this list at the question of, what do we do with people like Waste Management? What do we do with the case of Fairpoint? What do we do with the case of Londonderry Ford? Okay, now, or I can take out of context, you use the Gauls example. Well, that's great, well now, okay, for, for uniforms. Okay, so, you know, Joe buys uniforms for everybody. He buys gear for everybody, it's over the three thousand dollar threshold, we jump through all the paperwork hoops. Now, if he makes, you know, um, ten purchases of three hundred dollars apiece, each officer one at a time, no, no big issue, the cumulative thing is, but cumulatively, it should have triggered the purchasing policy. So that's where this came out of our conversation last year, of either I gotta do POs for everybody or do like master POs for the year because we might spend more than that. That was the concern that came up last year, that was why we made this list.
I think in the interest of something like uniforms, you should know what you're gonna spend in a year for uniforms, you should know what you'd be ordering, and you should know that you should follow the purchasing policy and get the appropriate bids. Now, if it just so happens that a guy needs a shirt because it got ruined in an altercation, it comes in for fifty bucks or whatever it is, it is what it is.
Right.
I think this list, as I've said already about all these policies, is a waste of time. Now, the other question that I'm gonna ask that I just thought of is, when we first developed all these policies, we ran them all through Town Council. Are we doing that with these as well, as we're going through them all?
We haven't, we haven't generated yet new policies, so we...
Well, there's, there's no major changes, just wording, just like a cleanup, a spelling, that kind of thing, there's been nothing real changed.
That's a matter of opinion, right?
Well, true, but I wasn't here for the last two, so I don't know if the question came up then, I mean...
There's been no significant changes.
Right, I didn't think there was.
I, I think compiling this list is really just a waste of time, because what's gonna happen is, is every year, you're gonna be chasing this list, every time you find somebody else.
And my observation is that every vendor, every vendor, I was gonna say the company, but every vendor Litchfield has is on the list. I mean...
So, which means we really don't need a purchasing policy anymore unless it's a fire truck or...
Well, I think, I think...
But that's gonna be a sole source anyway.
Right, but I was gonna say, I think part of the reason why it's come up too is so we didn't create standing P Os with run rate. It was that these guys we know are gonna spend, like you were saying earlier, several thousand dollars over the quarters, you know, and normally what you do in corporate world, you'd open up a generic P O to say, I'm gonna buy off this P O, I'm gonna draw off my budget, which is twelve thousand dollars. So, I thought this was partly the reason why we created this list. These are vendors we know are gonna have a relationship throughout the years, throughout the year.
So, here's a suggestion. Instead of doing that, I mean, if what you're worried about, I have a sense, maybe I'm wrong in this, is having an auditor come in and question whether you've split purchases against, is that what your concern is?
That's, that's part of the concern here, yeah.
Okay, so, so how would it be then that if somehow in the policy, we said that the town administrator, or the chairman, or the board, or whatever you wanna call it, can make note in the files, because you're gonna have a file per vendor, right? You have a file somewhere in the back room, per vendor. And you put a note on the file saying, yeah, okay, during the course of the year, we're gonna be purchasing parts of uniforms as the year goes on. And that is recognized by you or Selectman, and that's the end of it. Now, I know that's what you're trying to do here, but it just strikes me that every vendor we have is being added to this list, and therefore, it's, you know...
No, it's, it's not every vendor we have on the list, so. It would be a hell of a lot easier if it was, because then I could have given you this report instead of approve these. I mean, this actually was going through, it's actually an exercise of going through and look at, look at spend and look at one... Yeah, look at one-time spend versus, I'm, I'm fine with going without. I did this because this came up out of some set of questions we had last year, and so it bubbled up that I guess I better update this. I'm more than happy to not have this exercise, and we'll see where we go.
Can't this be a list that the council receivable, count payable uses as their, they know they gotta make sure that these notes are in these files and...
Well, yeah, I mean, this is, this is, well, we don't...
They're a list, I mean...
I mean, this is a list, I mean, this is, this would be my list.
Or, you know, if you want to limit this to just sole source, so that you're recognized, you know, sole source, that's fine, to me, I mean...
Yeah, and you, you know, and the thing is, in some cases...
And I know you're sitting there smiling because you're thinking that I'm the one who promoted this.
Well, I think I created this out of some line of questioning that you had in a prior year. But I would love to simplify, I mean, some...
I couldn't find the minutes, I looked.
Yeah, I mean, some cases, some cases are purely, some cases are purely sole source, and some cases are, you know, you know, we have two and we kinda swap between them. I mean, I can think of, you know, some equipment providers that Jack uses. And he calls vendor A and vendor B, and whoever has the best deal on those, that's who we go with.
Right.
And then the next case, you know, if we went with vendor B, it might be vendor A. Cumulatively, we spend more than the threshold on both of them. So, I'm happy shelving this, and let's kinda see what, I mean, the worst case by not, by not proceeding with this is in a future year, the auditors come back and slap your hand and say, you're missing this part of your, of following your purchasing policy. And we say, ah, okay, what's the best way to fix it, and we fix it. I mean, that's your risk.
So, we sit there and say at that point, yeah, Jason was right, I wonder whatever happened to him?
He pulled his hair out after we...
And, yeah, now, I will go over to the whiteboard and say, I told you so. No, I'm fine with shelving it, that's fine.
Okay. I'm sorry, it just strikes me as...
I'm fine with shelving it too.
All right, so everybody's in agreement, we'll shelf it, we'll shelve it.
Awesome.
Because it's not being approved, it just stays on the vine.
That's fine.
Right.
No complaints here.
We wanna make a motion to do something with it.
Is it an existing policy now?
Uh, no, it's not a policy, it's just a approved list. So, you can just let it expire.
All right, moving on, records retention.
Records retention, not a heck of a lot here. We added, because we've actually been cleaning up records, we flagged a few things that needed to be added. And I think we put them all in the voluntary section. So, if you go to the... Let me make sure that that's where I have it at this point. Yeah, the appendix B discretionary retention of records not listed above. We added bank reconciliation worksheets, Department of Revenue M S forms, candidate signup forms, which amazingly were not listed anywhere in the long list of things we have to keep. So, in consultation with the town clerk, we identified what seemed to be the most prudent...
Are those listed on the state?
No, they're not, that, that was the problem, and that's why they weren't in our policy anywhere. So, in theory, we could get rid of them all together, but in practice, it seemed like, you know, these are probably useful things to keep.
I thought you were required to keep it.
Right, exactly, you know? Well, like, the candidate signup forms was a great, was a great one that, you know, Terry and I were talking about that. We could find no reference anywhere to it. So, that's why what we added here, you'll see, it's term of office plus three years. And that's based on the oath of office law. We have to retain your oath for term plus three. So, we figured we might as well take your signup for term plus three, rather than just pick a new standard. So, that's all I have on that.
Can I, so, in the case of electronic mail, how are we enforcing that?
It is, no, I mean, it is simply listed as, those are discretionary. And right now, we're retaining as needed. I'm not sure what protocols we may have for the between two or more elected or appointed.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah. Um, you know, alternative, yeah, I mean, we...
I mean, I understand it's discretionary, so maybe we don't have to hear it, but...
Just as, I mean, I wouldn't set a policy on it, I mean, does that mean every time you send a reminder to the board saying we're gonna have a meeting Monday and da-da-da-da? But I gotta retain that for...
Well, that gets retained anyway, because...
I know, but that's just a computer function.
Yeah, that gets retained, anything to the disposition gets retained, but anything between individual members...
Probably doesn't.
No, it doesn't, so, I mean, it does as long as the individual members don't delete it, right, and archive it, but... We don't have an archiving process, and we don't have a way to ensure that it doesn't go.
All right.
That's why I'm saying...
You're more than welcome to delete that, that was part of what was put in last year. Again, that one is not set up by state law, so...
Yeah, just...
If you'd like me to strike that, that can be removed.
I would, we have no, if we get called on it, we wouldn't be able, we would not be able to produce.
Good, those are the only other changes we had. We may, we may double back hopefully in a year and pull. We kept some, we kept some financial records longer than required by state law. Part of that came from last year, we were still solving mysteries from the troubled period. It looks as if those are behind us now, so if we make it one more year of not having to go back into those, we can reduce that to state level.
Okay. So, beyond that one change, any other, anybody else have any recommendations or suggestions?
Make a motion to approve the records retention policy as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries four zero zero. So, next is the social, the social media policy. Uh, Jason, forgive me, but I thought we accessed it a long time ago. I know we opened, we had this...
No, actually, just to clarify, we reviewed this at the meeting, one of the meetings where you were absent. And at my request to the board, we postponed this until tonight because I think that there was obviously a belief on my part anyways that you had a vested interest in seeing some action taken on this, and I know Jason does as well. And I thought that there made sense to wait until you got back, so...
Yeah, I was referring, we originally brought the idea up, it seemed like it didn't get a lot of favor, favor...
Yeah, and...
I know we actually, I think we actually kind of massaged it a little bit, so...
Yeah, you know, the background on this, just so you recall, is that this is one where, you know, we operate now without any great social media policy. And I, I saw this back early in the year, one of my colleagues posted their policy. I think this is primarily based on Exodus policy. I looked at it, I'm like, oh, hey, that, that looks pretty straightforward. And it was at, you know, it's something that John and I have talked about from time to time because, you know, we kind of fly blind out there. That's, so, to get to Selectman Perry's earlier, earlier question on another point, no, this one would not have been through council yet, because this, this one is all new if you decide to go with it. The, I think the sticking point, and the one that was brought up when we discussed it, and one that, you know, with the benefit of some more thought, I still don't have a great answer to, is this notion of managing the logistics of denying access. Who's removing material, who's making that determination? And that seems, that whole issue seems to be fraught with a problem. And I don't have a great answer to that. So, I'm either looking for any great insight on how to deal with that, or alternatively, I'm perfectly happy shelving this concept for now.
The, the whole concept came up oddly enough during the election time when there was a posting that was made, and then someone put something in that was derogatory against a candidate. And I struck, you know, as, as one of the moderators of our Facebook page at this point, you know, I had the ability to remove it and mark it as bad, right? But I didn't know what to do. And eventually, the person that actually posted it did, ended up moving it, removed it themselves, so we didn't take any action. But it opened up the question, well, we know it's wrong, it's abusive, it's obscene, it's, you know, profanity, whatever, should we remove it? Because the Facebook page, in this case, is, is becoming a, you know, more than just a website, you know, our, our town page, it's becoming the place people go to see what's going on in Litchfield. You know, they see updates from our departments, they see pictures of events going on around town, the calendar, you know, the event calendars are there, we're pushing it all the time. So, you know, it just seemed like it made sense to consider if we wanna take any action at all. I will tell you that, like, in the case of our YouTube page, which is where we publish all the public minute, all the public recordings of all our meetings, commenting is turned off. So, there's no, you know, they just, they watch the video and that's it, right, there's no ability to comment. But in Facebook, when we post up a page or, you know, recognizing somebody or announcing listed candidates, people then can actually freely go ahead and post, you know, follow on. And in this case, like I said, this, this person posted something that was just way off base, rehashing something a little, and then, like I said, he, this person must have felt better of himself and took it off because it was the right thing to do. And that's about it.
And, and I, I recognize the value of social media. I recognize the value of getting the information out. What I get concerned about, and the only thing I'm concerned about is who acts as, I call it, quote, God, in determining whether something's offensive, not offensive, something's derogatory to people. And I'm not saying that that shouldn't be done, I, I'm just, I, I, you know, I, I don't know. I, I think we, I'll nominate Jason to do all of this, so...
Thanks.
Got a motion, I'll second it.
All right.
I'm assuming we're all joking, and someone's gonna ignore that. I mean, right now, the, the, Facebook is the place we, we post. There are three people, I believe, that have access to post. It's Jason, myself, and I think Terry does. Those all cross-post to Twitter and a few other places, but everything gets started at Facebook. I mean, it's not like there's a hundred people and they're doing it, it's, it's three people. The question is, when it smells bad, it is bad, do we take action or not? I think that was really the clarification, was like, we know what profane is, we know what obscene is, you know, we know what pornographic stuff is, those are the things that are outlined. You know, personal attacks, I mean, that's the other side of it too. That was probably this one, this, the personal attack, that was more categorized than personal attack than anything else. And it just seemed, you know, to have it on Litchfield's town site...
Doesn't make sense.
Right, it just, it just didn't feel right, we should take it down. And don't forget, you know, the police department, the fire department have their own pages also. Again, it's all about getting stuff out to the public, and that's how people consume it, so... You know, maybe we let it, well, we don't do anything with the policy, we just sit on it and say, do we have any other, other examples of a problem? Because quite frankly, there hasn't been a problem. It was the one or two times that happened, and it happened during a very heated, you know, discussion time during the election, that.
And, and, and I think...
I'll compare what's on some of the other boards.
Yeah, and, and I think the other piece too, and this tries to, this tried to look at two pieces. And I think, you know, in the one piece is, what do you do with inbound stuff? The other thing is outbound stuff. And I don't think right now, you know, as John said, the three people putting content, I, generally, we kind of know what's appropriate to put up there.
Well, it's always, the outbound stuff is typically things we would have, right, either mass mail or... We're using these tools to get more information that we would have posted, you know, in the Tom Crier kind of thing.
Right, you know, I, I think if that's sort of the composition of who your administrators are of that page and putting content out changes, then maybe you say, I mean, I think, you know, the three of us have kind of figured out what works and what's appropriate. But, you know, if you bring somebody new in, you may wanna have that conversation. These are the kinds of things we do, and this is what is and what isn't. So, I, I'm perfectly fine shelving this for now.
Why are you looking at me?
No, I'm looking down the room, I'm looking at you per se. I'm looking, I went this way, I went that way, I'm just looking for any, any signs of proceed or don't proceed.
I mean, if it's, if it hasn't been a problem, I mean...
Yeah, like I said, it happened to be a time and place when something did occur, you know, and, you know, I just, like I said, the prompt was, I don't want something like that staining the wall to Litchfield.
Right, and I, I agree with that a percent. It's just, that's always a, unfortunately, there's no black and white.
Right, right. Yeah, I know.
It's not like a police cruiser, it's black and white.
All right, so, is it, so the desire of the board is not to take any action, let's leave it, that's what it sounds like.
I'm fine.
Right, Steve?
Yeah, okay. We have enough policies.
Remember, most of these policies were developed when you were first on the board, when you were back on the board originally. A lot of these were.
Yeah.
And it was in response to a lot of things.
I said about the same thing then, too.
Well, we did.
All right, I think that concludes the policy review.
And we, do we have everything done, Jason?
We're done.
We're done?
We're done.
That was my reckless, I think, though. All right, next up is water sources.
Water sources. One of the things we've discussed from time to time and never really pursued any further is investigating potential municipal water sources for the town. Right now, you know, the water service is via Penachuck, the two water supply wells transfer that water to Hudson. And so, just, you know, with water on the mind recently with Penachuck rates and the Water District coming in and the like, I wanted to just sort of bounce that back of, yeah, is this something the board wants to more actively consider about looking at water sources or...
Help, help me understand what you're trying to, are we gonna tap a well?
Maybe.
Here's, here's what I see as the future. Hudson right now does not have any wells. Hudson is taking all of their water, their municipal water from Litchfield with a small portion of that makeup stream coming across the bridge in, from the Penachuck system into, into, into Hudson's system. My concern is that at some, at some point, we're gonna be in a situation where we're gonna be, Litchfield's gonna grow, Hudson's gonna continue to grow, and we're gonna be beyond the capacity of those two wells. And I don't know what will happen at that point. I seriously doubt that Hudson could shut down Litchfield's drawer of water because that's a P U C action and... I seriously doubt that Hudson could shut down Litchfield's drawer of water, because that's a PUC action, and I'm sure it could get very complicated. But my thought would be that somehow along the line, if Litchfield could develop its own well, potentially tie it into the existing infrastructure within Litchfield, that would offset the, the demand for Litchfield, potentially also, if that well was sufficient enough, provide Litchfield with all the water, and we'd only, we'd lower the rates in a small amount, that type of thing. I think it would make sense that we would establish our own wells and be able to have the ability to assure the future needs of Litchfield in terms of water.
Would, that would require us to build, to do tanks, treatment, pump, right?
Use the existing system. We would have to, we'd have to drill a well, we'd have to put a pump in place, and then we feed it into the existing system.
So, the volume will come out of ours, it would still get treated by Penachuck and maintained by Penachuck, but the volume comes from our well? Well, we're drawing the same, same source as Hudson is, at that point.
No, we'd need a new.
No, we, we didn't need a new system.
No, I'm talking about that this, the water is coming from the same place, it's all in the aquifers, right, I mean.
Well, you wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't tap it right next to the ones.
No, I, I know, I, I know, I just, yeah. And so, how would that reduce our rate, though?
I don't know, I mean, those are all types of things that have to be.
Cause I mean, what portion of the vol- what portion of the water volume?
I, I could see sitting down with the, let's say that Litchfield is using twenty million gallons a day, and I don't think that's reasonable, but let's, not a day, but a month or whatever, pick a, pick a term. Um, and maybe we are able to pull out of that well somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, fifteen million gallons, okay? That's basically three quarters of the amount of water being given to Litchfield residents that are produced on the Litchfield well. And my question at that point would then be, let's go to talk to Penachuck and say, look, we want a decrease in the rates of cost for Litchfield residents who are on town water, and this is what we're gonna be putting into this, um, as a means to offset that cost, and that's the water that they're gonna be using. Now, it's not gonna take it to zero, I understand that, because there's infrastructure costs and everything else. But, you know, I guess without pursuing that, we'll never know what's possible, and I guess my, my thinking is, we gotta do something to assure this town's gonna have water in the future, and if we don't have that water in the future, we're gonna be dependent continuously on Penachuck East Corporation, as well as dependent upon the town of Hudson. And at some point, the system's gonna break, and we're not gonna have that, um, that capacity isn't gonna last forever.
What, what do you see the effort involved with doing that? I mean, it sounds like we're reaching out to Penachuck and asking them, but.
No, I, I wouldn't expect Penachuck to do it, I would say that, um, well, I, I think working with Penachuck may make some sense. I also think that if we had, um, some level of cost for engineering and things like that, and I'm thinking that maybe that's a warrant article next year, I don't know.
It, it, very similar, actually, in some ways to, you, you know, I, I think that this was one of the things that, um, you know, we left on the table a couple, a couple of years ago, you know, Frank and I were sort of kicking this around, you know, the board tasked Frank with, hey, look at some economic development things, we started down the wastewater path.
Right.
Which, you know, we did not meet with great success, but, but that sort of same type of approach of have a few conversations, frame something out, uh, most likely look at something, could you structure something, if it takes money, what would the study be, what would the article be? So, very similar to the approach we took with wastewater. We dug enough in to be relatively knowledgeable on sort of a broad framework, and said, this is kind of the approach we would take, these would be the resources we'd need if the community wants to move the conversation any further.
To me, it makes sense, like this, yeah, makes sense. So, I mean, is he asked here to say, go ahead, Jason, go work on that? Maybe with Frank, cause Frank's interests, but, and then come back to the board with a recommendation?
I think at this point, yeah, I mean, you know, if, if you'd like, I, I would say, you know, I'd like to have Frank's help with this, that if you would like us to put a little bit of attention in having some of those conversations, kind of, like I said, take the approach we took with wastewater, kind of flesh out some ideas, uh, bring a concept back, and see where it goes.
And they, and maybe it's not we own the well, maybe it's that we have another well drilled, and work with Penachuck on it. I don't know what the right answer is right now, but I think it's worth.
Just to investigate.
I think it's worth investigating, and I think in the next fifteen to twenty years, water is gonna be a critical issue. And things aren't gonna be able to be done this, the way they are today, that's just my thinking.
Frank? Alright, well, does that, I don't think that, does that require, doesn't require both of the boys, it's the direction of the.
If you guys are happy with that, that's fine, as long as you know that we're, you know, talking about it and stuff, that's all.
So, Frank, Frank and Jason work as a team to kind of look at options in, in the direction, and make a recommendation back to the board at some point on a move forward. The expectation is before budgeting or during the warrant process.
Right.
Alright, I guess we move on to old business?
Yep.
Fee update.
Fee update, gonna be real short and sweet on this one. Yeah, I introduced some of this, uh, a meeting or two ago, there've been a couple kind of scattershot questions, um, and I wanted to sort of get that input as, what are your questions, what are your concerns, so I actually know what things I'm trying to answer and chase before I go propose a public hearing and propose any of these. So, um, I guess that's what I'm, I'm looking for.
Who has the questions?
I had questions last time, when, um, we ended up with the, um, fees. There are, there were several new fees that were being charged, or proposing to be charged to residents. And my opinion, or my question was, where does it stop in terms of those fees and become part of the tax collection? Versus where does it become a fee that somebody has to pay? In the situation of somebody having to come in and evacuate a refrigerate, a refrigerant unit, we've gotta bring people in to do that, we've gotta, I, I can understand that. Tires, okay, I can buy that, but when it starts to come down to mattresses, wood, stuff like that, I mean, people are paying taxes in order to be able to use the facility, and I guess the question I had was, um, I thought it was a little bit over the top, that's the point.
I, I think I'm, I, I somewhat, I, I think I agree with Frank, pretty much across the board, I, you know.
Can you?
I agree with Frank Byron, this is not, this is not a market history, I agree with him a lot. Like, I, I don't understa- I mean, I, I get the, the pass-through costs, when someone has to come into the evacuate, I get that. But, you know, in this example here, a box spring, five dollars, what's the difference? It goes into the same bin as the regular trash, right? It's not, we're paying for it to haul it out from a tax base.
Right.
You know, five dollars for a, for a fire extinguisher, I'm not sure where that cost comes from, it's just a piece of metal, if it's empty.
If it's empty.
If it's not, it'll go booming, well, empty, when it gets crushed. That was joking, hopefully it doesn't happen, but it does. So, I, I think I share, I mean, and I guess the other question around TVs, I thought that was just a pass-through cost originally.
It, it is, it is and it isn't, this is the problem, is, it's a pass-through cost, but the pass-through cost is, we pay X amount for the container load.
Six hundred dollars a container?
Right, six hundred dollars a container, and so part, and so we pass through, so passing through that cost on a unit basis becomes tricky, because your small, your small TV versus your gargantuan TV, you've, you know, you fill up the container a lot faster with the big ones.
Right, but now they're not putting them in a container, they were all bundled up on pallets.
Yeah, we're going back to container, that was a, uh, that was a one-time transition, way, way more headache than it was worth.
I, I guess moving, going to the future, I mean, today TVs are, you know what I mean, those big TVs, I mean, how many people really have the big TVs? I actually have, or I had one down in my basement, I don't have it anymore, but, no, you know what I'm saying?
Wife got it off, huh?
No, I know, but.
I'm gonna have to go and buy a new one before I have to pay more money.
You can't, you can't go into any store today and see one of those, I mean, the big TV, you know, the projection TVs, you know, just don't see it.
Yeah, I mean, if anything that new, you're talking about something.
Which means they're all coming out of people's houses to, to us and being replaced.
TVs are so cheap today, so, I mean, it's, I don't.
I guess, I mean, I guess I share, I share Frank's, come on, this is really a tax increase without being a tax increase, and so, we've already absorbed, already absorbed this cost in the tax base today, and we're doing it economically. Why, and never mind that, this opens up a whole lot of issues around handling the cash, because the idea of writing a check and it opens up that, and I know we've talked about other things to do with check, credit cards and stuff like that, but are we really? Is there a benefit, I guess, of doing that at some point?
No, and, and, and I think where, where this, this came from were a couple of things, I mean, one was sort of the changing nature of we charge one size fits all for the TVs, and realizing that the volume of TVs is wildly different. So, trying to find a way, cause I, I, we don't have a unit charge on that. You know, I, the, um, the issue of mattresses was brought up, uh, in the fact that the, the size of those fills the C and D bin faster.
But we pay by the weight, and, I mean, yes, things are classes.
But it's volume and hall and all of that, um, so, one of the.
Burn it.
So, you know, part of this was also looking at what are some of the typical charges that other facilities use? It's not unusual to charge for mattresses, it's not unusual to charge for these things. That said, if the philosophy is, you, we really only like to see things that have a direct third-party pass-through, and we're not counting C and D in that, that's fine, and, you know, Dave and I can go back and do, and do that, that's sort of the input that I'm trying to gauge here, is we kind of said, okay, here's the laundry list of, and if you want us to take a narrower view and drop some stuff off, that's the input I'm looking for.
See, I look at like basketball nets assembled, a fee for something like that, priceless. Take it apart, you get rid of it for nothing, bring it in assembled, pay a fee. You know what I mean, it, it puts a little onus on the people that are bringing stuff down there. I mean, the mattress, box, well, a mattress is gonna fill the dumpster, a box spring's gonna get crushed. So, this is gonna be almost nothing for a box.
Totally, a basketball hoop would get crushed, too.
They, right, when they put in the metal thing, and they take the backhoe.
Cause they go there with the ba- with the backhoe, and they, they crush everything anyway.
Yeah, but they're still gonna take the base off of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but once you crush it with the backhoe, it's gone, anyway, crumbles and no piece, you know, little pieces, so.
But it comes, it comes in plastic and metal and plastic, and you have to, you know, spend the time.
And I mean, you look at mattresses, right, and I mean, how many people, I mean, change, what is it, you're supposed to change it every five or seven years, right? Most people don't do it for twenty years, so, I mean, it's.
And they take it away with them when they take it away. So, I mean, how many, I, just the other, how many are really coming into the place, but.
And they're dropping the propane tanks?
It's probably because we don't see any propane.
Oh, yeah, but, yeah, but we, cause we don't see the little ones anymore, and so, uh, be- because most of the, sort of the swap, the swap thing has gotten rid of most of the small ones, so the suggestion is to put in only the thirty, sixty pound, the larger ones coming in, cause we still have to deal with disposal of those, but the little ones, you know, when this fee schedule was written, that was an issue, it's not an issue anymore.
When you say little ones, you're talking about the, like, the camping ones?
Gas grubs?
Yeah, you're sort of, your, your gas grill ones.
Twenty pound.
The twenty, yeah.
Twenty pounders, alright.
Right.
But they don't fill with twenty pounds anymore.
No, it's like eight fifteen or whatever. That's why, that's why the swappable's are all kind of funny.
Okay. I think I, is, so, the, so the, i- is the general consensus, you would prefer sort of a smaller tighter, tighter list on things that we can directly connect to direct pass-through costs?
One for one cost, yeah, that's what it sounds like, yeah.
The, the only thing to point out, and, and, and that was a change that was suggested here for roofing shingles from fifty dollars a load to ten dollars per square, and we got into a discussion, there's how many people even know what a square of shingles is.
I heard that discussion.
But the, but the, but the question really comes down to is whether fifty, to me, is fifty dollars to correct, I don't know, I mean, if you're talking to load, which is a dump truck full, that's a, that's one issue. You're talking to load where somebody's got a bundle of shingles that he had in his garage for umpteen years, and now is getting rid of, that's a separate issue.
And, and, and that's where Dave suggested square, because square was, square was a known term, um, for, you know, and usually when they come in, it runs through Dave for how much it is. Load is a very hard to define term.
But it's the same argument, right, it's that, we have a taxpayer coming in to dump off shingles that are either from his house being redone over, or his own storage, whatever. I mean, the only concern I have here is any contractor's dumping outside of Litchfield in there, and how do you deal with that? I don't know if that's even an issue, but.
A- and, and my only point is, I'm not sure a load is a good term of art to use in this particular situation. On the other hand, square is more accurate, but I'm not necessarily certain that it's a, a, a term that we want to use either, I, I'd be interested in seeing what other communities use.
I mean, if they refer to Dave all the time, Dave's there, it wouldn't be an issue, cause he's familiar with the square, but, you know, you get some of the young kids in there, yeah, I got square shingles, and in reality, there's five square in there, you know what I mean?
Aren't, aren't the shingles going in the recycle area, though? Aren't they being brought back down and?
I think they might be now.
I, I, yeah, like I said, the only, only concern I have about shingles is it coming from non-residents, right? If it's a resident, it's the same argument, though, it's not, there's no direct pass, there's no direct cost to it.
Okay.
Alright, so you're gonna rehash a little bit?
Yep, that's fine, that's the input I was looking for on that. So.
Alright, next is, uh, health insurance.
Health insurance. Health insurance, um, alright, uh, touched on parts of this before. We, um, are currently, we currently offer two plans through Health Trust that are associated with Anthem Blue Cross. We know that there is an increase slated for July one. The, so, we also know that, um, we're currently rated with the Litchfield School District. With Litchfield School District, uh, teacher's contract passing, as of next July, we will no longer be part of that rating group. Uh, and what we would see is our, um, rates, uh, going up significantly. Uh, part of that is, because we're with the school, we're in a group that's over fifty covered people, so they can rate us individually. Without the school, we're under fifty, so we get stuck into a larger pool that has a higher cost. So, what, what I went out, what I did is I went to the three pools that offer insurance. Uh, Health Trust, School Care, um, which offers, uh, products from Cigna, and then Hampshire Interlocal Trust, which offers Harvard Pilgrim. I looked at sort of first, kind of as much as I could do, kind of an apples-to-apples comparison, so kind of keeping, where are we, what, what can I get that's the equivalent of that? And, uh, and I also looked knowing, with sort of the anticipation of, what if I was in that under fifty pool this year? I got the rates from Health Trust, um, for that, so I could compare where, where it might be going. The, uh, what I, what I saw when I compared those rates is that moving to the Interlocal Trust, uh, we would save about twenty-four thousand dollars. And School Care was not competitive at all. So, uh, in the interim, I've been try, I've been working on getting, uh, review from the union, this is a somewhat negotiated item with them, um, and so, you know, we're trying to offer equivalent coverage wherever possible there. The summary would be that I would recommend moving to the Interlocal Trust for the Harvard Pilgrim programs. They're equivalent to what we offer today, and that would be effective September first. Reason for this is this would eliminate the increase that we would face for Health Trust, not only for the balance of this year, uh, but also next year, and then the big spike the following year. Um, and this actually has the effect of keeping our, our insurance price effectively flat from July thirteen through June twenty fifteen. Uh, because when you look at the charts, you'll see that the interlocal prices with Harvard Pilgrim are roughly the same as what we're paying, uh, what we're paying now, uh, for, um, uh, through Health Trust. And actually, if you wanna go back, we actually dodged the increase last July in large measure, because we changed the prescription plan, and that basically kept our costs flat, so, um, you know, we, we're looking at relatively flat premiums from a period, if you think about that, from, um, Ju- July first of twelve through June thirty of fifteen, uh, by making some of these adjustments. Once I had found that plan that eliminated the increase that we expected, and the large increase in twenty fifteen, I did slow my pursuit of other plans. I had asked all of the vendors to give me things that were beyond just the apples-to-apples, what if I tweak? What if I tweak a co-pay? What if I add a deductible? What are some of the other scenarios there? I found that on the Health, the Health Trust case, even with more aggressive plans of kicking up the office visit level significantly from like five to twenty dollars, adding in deductibles, I couldn't wipe out the increase that we would see next July with those changes. And so, when I, you know, my investigation on the, many of the alternatives slowed a little bit after I was able to get these, the interlocal numbers and plug them in and realize that we would basically remain flat. Part of, part of that has been, we haven't made any wage adjustments for the majority of our employees for those, for the past several years. And so, I was less enthusiastic about pushing further increases in health-related costs beyond premium changes. In some cases, our, some employees have had higher prescription costs. September first is, sort of is an unusual date, and I wanted to double back. The logic for that is we will renew our current plan with Health Trust on July first. We will then serve notice to leave Health Trust as of the end of August and move to the Interlocal Trust in September. Part of the reason for that is we are able to leave Health Trust with a sixty-day noted, notification. Health Trust is still paying surplus from two thousand twelve, yes?
If you're gonna leave in September, and you're gonna give notice in August, I don't see sixty days.
Sorry, did, did I say August? I meant July. July one, sorry. Leave, part of the reason is Health Trust is paying back. We will have surplus from two thousand twelve, as well as surplus from two thousand ten, that's part of the final settlement with the Secretary of State's office. That surplus is about sixteen thousand dollars. Eighty-seven hundred goes back to employees, about seventy-seven hundred hours is retained for us as revenue. So, which is far greater than any of the savings we would see by shifting plans before that. Interlocal Trust has locked in the price, so if we come in September, they will have, there will be no rate change. And the other small potatoes, but, you know, it, it fits in nicely. The, our flexible spending program, we currently pay a quarterly fee for administration on that through Health Trust. It is, comes to us at no additional charge to the Interlocal Trust.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, in, in, to, to me, the Interlocal Trust option wipes out the increase we're seeing now. It wipes out the looming problem in July of fifteen. We have informal sort of union buy-in right now. I spoke with them today. They've kind of done their homework. They're comfortable with it and feel as if we're offering an apples-to-apples comparison.
How about the other employees?
Um, I have heard no, no concerns.
No, they, you, you had, you had them come in and present, present to them the different options, right?
Yeah, Har- Harvard, Harvard Pil- Interlocal Trust came and explained, this is what we're looking at, this is where the options are. And so, people have been able to kind of, five, followed up with questions as they've had them, been able to kind of, to kick the tires on it. You know, my sense at this point is, keeping everything rela- basically flat is a great spot for us to be in. You know, I would suggest that depending on what kind of increases we see next year, we then investigate whether further adjustment to co-pays makes some sense. Questions?
This isn't gonna, now, there's no co-pay, I mean, deductibles or anything like that, that they have today?
It, it is, it is, it is pretty much the same plan we offer today.
Well, I'm asking that because if there is deductibles, would they be rolled into the new plan? Usually, new plans will accept a prior plan's deductible rollover for a percentage.
The, in this case, no, because the deduct, there are some things that, you know, there's no sort of blanket deductible, but there are certain elements where you do have deductibles for, out of service, or out of network, or certain items that aren't kind of the core coverage. Harvard's deductibles reset on Janu- in January?
No, they don't. Not all of them do.
Okay, in this plan, the Harvard, the Harvard ones reset in January, and their reimbursement resets in January as well? So, there's no carryover from the old one, but you get three months and then you move into twelve months. And the lion's share, the, the way this is set up, the lion's share of core services that most people are using are not going to be hitting those, those deductibles. That's, you know, part of the reason for, for the, the HMO in the first place, is that most, all the core things are covered.
Let's make certain that all our employees understand that that's the way that that is. So, if they do have to use those deductibles, that they're going to reset.
So, you just not take any action tonight?
No, I'm, I'm just saying that if this is the way we're gonna move, I just want to make sure that he makes sure that they understand, so that we don't get somebody that says, I use it because I expected it to be good for a year, and.
No, I mean, we've provided, well, you know, we've provided that information, we've also people who have raised the issue or have certain things that they're concerned about, if they've worked, you know, we've connected them directly to get their own questions answered through Harvard Pilgrim and the Interlocal Trust to clarify those pieces. So, sort of anybody who had that sort of, I have a concern about X type issue, we've sent them Harvard Pilgrim's direction, and they've been very responsive in getting us answers back.
Not, not to advertise for Harvard, but I think I remember Harvard for twenty-five years, I think. And I've never had a problem, so, just from my own experience, but. Every plan's different, though, I could.
Well, I mean, it, it has helped in terms of, you know, change. This is, this is a big deal. You know, the town has been with Anthem and Blue Cross seemingly forever. So, you know, a shift away from that, I think, is, you know, always going to be a, an adjustment for some people. The move to Harvard Pilgrim, given its reputation, I think, has made it, made it a more comfortable suggestion for people to consider.
Okay. Any other discuss, any other questions? Motion? I won't construct it, right, probably.
Oh, well, the, the authorization I'd be looking for would be the authorization to proceed and execute all necessary documents with the Interlocal Trust to start effective September first.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bork. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries four zero zero. And Jason, thank you for the work.
Just thank you, Jason.
It's nice to see it's gonna flatten, but it's good.
Thank you.
As long as the employees are happy, we're happy at this point. All right, next. Update on Penachuk rate case.
Penachuk, on Penachuk rate case. The last meeting, we had talked about the pending settlement, and we were still, we still were party to it. And the suggestion was to have council look at it and make any comments back. Did have council look at it, and the, the issue is, since, you know, we have no argument that this isn't justified, and since staff in the Office of Consumer Advocates signed off on it, her recommendation was simply taking no position. They removed Litchfield from the signature block and indicated we didn't participate in settlement discussions. So, it didn't really take any formal action of, of, of this body. So, that's the update.
So, thirteen point seven seven percent.
Right, so, the, the upshot, and you may have seen this in the papers, is that the municipal hydrants will be going up thirteen point seven seven percent. Residential customers will see a ten point nine six percent increase. These two are slightly, slightly less than what was originally proposed and originally requested.
This goes in effect in July?
This goes, is effective July one. So.
What do you want to know?
So, you see a motion to accept the council's recommendation, right?
Um, if you'd like, we already acted. So, I, because we, it was, we acted because there was no action. So, I wanted to just close that loop, given the request from the last meeting.
All right. Anything else, Jason?
Um, one other thing that, that I dropped in, it's under informational items. I got it from the Planning Board yesterday, so I apologize for the shorter notice of it. And Kevin, feel free to chime in and correct me or adjust accordingly.
I'll try and help you. Frank could probably do better, but.
There, the, the Planning Board is looking at the impact fee ordinance, and so, as it sort of passed across my inbox to say, hey, do you have anything, on its way to council? I was reading it, and right now, a, an appeal of an impact fee calculation would go to the Planning Board. And I said, oh, that's interesting. It's not normally the case that planning boards hear appeals. In normal cases, the appeals hearing bodies are the zoning board of adjustment or the board of selectmen. And so, I had a handful of questions that I specifically sent to council on it. And, you know, the, I asked the question, the comment I got back was, the appeal process is up to you. Statute defaults an appeal to ZBA, but allows the ordinance to provide otherwise. With impact fees, it makes some measure of sense that goes to the board of selectmen rather than ZBA, because the amount of the fee is not really a zoning function. It's more of an administrative function, but either appeal path is legal. That was a question, or that was the answer from council. And so, the input that's being elicited here from the selectmen is on that issue of, you know, do you feel comfortable being the body that would hear appeals of impact fee?
From who?
Calculations.
From who?
From an aggrieved applicant.
Somebody's gotta hear it.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Now, do we have to make a change in the ordinance?
There's, there, yeah, the Planning Board has a bunch of things they're looking at. This is just one of, a boatload of things, but.
Sounds like we're okay with it.
Okay, all right, I will pass that along. Any other questions from anything else I had under informational items?
Oh, yeah. You can't go on vacation. Just clarifying that. All right, hearing nothing else, selectmen, selectmen reports? Who do you want to start? Steve, anything?
Nope.
Mr. Byron?
I'm, I'm just gonna be in tomorrow.
Mr. Byron?
Yes, the next meeting of the Budget Committee, I believe, is June twenty-first. I have a conflict.
Uh, you mean June?
I don't know, I picked the date. I think it's twenty-six, yeah, okay. Somewhere in there, I knew it was.
All right, thank you. Either I or Brent will do it. I'll have to Brian and Steve's available, but I, I can do it.
And, and, and I apologize for this, but this is something that I made, I bought tickets for months and months and months ago for an event, and.
There's no reason to apologize. It's, we all have personal lives, too, so.
I don't.
All right, well, speaking of Budget Committee, I guess I do need some advice from this board. I, obviously, I represented this board at the meeting in lieu of Frank. I took away two kind of, two actions, or two requests. They're, they're certainly asking for us to do council opinion on the multi-year lease. They made that request to this board. So, I need some guidance. So, how am I supposed to respond to them?
What, what was the request?
They, they want us to go to council and get an opinion on us being able to enter in a multi-year lease. You heard the, from the public input, that argument.
Okay, so we believe that we're
We are.
in compliance. Do we have prior feedback that states that? And I'm not saying it written, I mean, has there ever been a conversation with council that has said that?
I think back in two thousand and ten when we did it, right?
I, but, yeah, I mean, I think the original history from ten was that, there's no reason why, when we discussed when we entered last year. There's really no, no area that council has flagged of concern, as we've talked about, these types of issues.
Well, assuming that we have a new issue on the horizon involving police cruisers, I say, we get an opinion at council. Make sure we're right. Because we've gotta get this, we, we've gotta do something, whether it's now, September.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we recess for five minutes.
Okay.
And we would return to meeting at, say, eight thirty-five.
Do I, was?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the recessing for five minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries four zeros out. We are gonna go into recess. We'll be back in five minutes, so for our live viewers, stand by.